Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Great, under item two, discussion items, 2.1, request for the extension of time for transfer of Class I alcoholic beverage license, license for Knights of Columbus Building Association, DBA Columbia Club. Ms. Lumark, good evening.
President Sandy, members of the city council, we were here back in December on the Knights of Columbus is working on a deal to sell their business and transfer the associated liquor license to a new owner, and at that time they anticipated being able to wrap things up by March 31st, but it appears there's, that's not quite going to happen, so they're just looking for the extension till the end of the year, which is what we gave the other licensed owner in a similar situation.
Muddy Rivers?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gave Muddy Rivers an extension to the end of this year, right, so any comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move to extend the license to the end of the year, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Ms. Lumark, 2.2, application for abatement, 2020, tax year, Homestead credit application for Susan Hollard, 1711 North Fifth Street. Mr. Odek, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. This is an unusual situation. We have a Homestead credit application. This person owned the home in 2020, sold it in October of 2020, and didn't apply for the Homestead application, or the Homestead credit until 2022. So her taxes were paid, they were paid in closing, so she never wrote a check to the county, and the county just wanted to do a formal abatement, so that's why I'm here, asking you to recommend to the county that this Homestead credit be approved.
Any questions? Any comments? Move by Weber, second by Weigel. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Odek. Item 2.3, amendment to city code relating to taxi fares. Ms. Lumark.
President Sandy, members of the city council, well, city council has in ordinance currently the rates, the maximum rates that taxi operators are allowed to charge their customers. The last time that was updated was in 2008. Given the current economy and the price of gas, along with labor issues and wanting to be fair to their employees, the cap, the two taxi company owners have approached the city about adjusting the fares and making an increase so that they can cover their costs and stay in business. We've done a little bit of analysis, that's attached in your staff report. I did very, over the weekend, receive information on Williston, and they're very similar to the others, they're a $5.50 base fare and 55 cents per .2 mile. But bringing it forward for your consideration, the taxi companies are currently looking to change from our current rates, which are $3 for the first eighth of a mile and 30 cents for each successive eighth of a mile, to $6 for the first eighth of a mile and then 50 cents for each additional eighth of a mile, and then further to add the ability for them to include a $10 minimum fare. What we're hearing from the companies is that they have a lot of very short fares, sometimes resulting in only a few blocks, to get someone from point A to a medical appointment or from one establishment to another, and when they're making all those short trips, it's a lot of extra wear and tear on their vehicles, and they're just not getting enough revenue to cover their costs of operation. So we agreed to bring this forward, so you guys could consider it. Again, the fares that we currently set are maximum, so they could always charge less than that, but at this time, that's the fare they feel that they need to be able to operate in the city.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Lumark? Mr. Weigel?
I guess I would just, maybe this is more for Mr. Gosted, but I'm just kind of curious why we're limiting a business on what they, they can charge somebody. We don't limit Uber or Lyft or other rideshare services, so I guess I would just wonder why we're limiting a business on what they can charge somebody for their services.
Discuss it. I can't answer as to why, other than what Ms. Lumark just explained, is that when there's a short, there is a, they can't charge a, the minimum fee can't be more than $10, which means, you know, if it's a short drive, it's, it's, they can't charge $15 for, be limited to 10. That's the only rationale I can, that I can consider.
Would we, would we have to change our ordinance if we wanted to remove the minimums, the maximums, anything in between? Or would we just, how, I guess I'm not sure what our city ordinance says.
For, for, and that's what's being proposed.
Okay.
Is, is a change, it, it talks about, one of the changes to add is that the maximum, minimum fare can only, is limited to $10.
Sounds good. I guess I would leave it open to other council members. I, I don't see the reason why we limit a business on what they can charge. We don't do it to Uber, Lyft. I would be in favor of allowing their business to operate freely like we do any other business in Grand Forks.
But Mr. Weigel, I understand and appreciate what you're saying. I think the reason, perhaps I'm wrong, but I think the reason that cities provide maximums and limitations is because of the transparency in cost, because they're, they're using a meter, and so you jump in and you don't know how much it's going to cost you until you get to your destination, right? And so versus with Lyft and Uber, they tell you in advance what it's going to cost you. And so I think probably in the past, there have been situations where taxi companies have taken advantage of people, and so then cities have decided to regulate it. I'm okay, I'm 100%, if you decide and you want to advocate for getting rid of these, I would probably go along with it, knowing that in today's day and age, if the taxi companies were trying to take, or were taking advantage of people, they probably, with today's social media and everything else, everyone would know and very quickly that the company would either have to change their practices or they would go out of business, I would assume. So again, I'm, I'm okay with whatever you're suggesting for the future. I will note that I think there's, Mr. Gosted, in the, in the ordinance, there is a typo. When, after the change from $3 to $6, it says the first 1/8, but in prons you have 1/2, so I did notice that earlier.
Yeah, that's, that's actually in the original.
Yeah, right.
So we'll have to make that modification.
Yeah, I understand, so. Anyway, other comments or thoughts? Yes, Ms. Lumark?
I was just going to point out that there are some cities for, in a couple of our cities where they don't regulate fares at all. They require that the cab company submit to the city a list of what their rates will be for the upcoming year when they submit their renewal. So that way, there's some, somewhat oversight on the part of the city, so if someone feels they're not being treated fairly, they can contact the city and verify that what they were charged is what the company says they're going to do business for. So that's kind of another step down from the city actually setting rates, but.
Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
Like, like President Sandy, I find Council Rep. Weigel's arguments to, you know, have some, certainly validity, right? I drove cab for a while. I hated those short runs. They were, they were terrible. And they tended to be low tippers as well, so it was, it was, it was the crummiest kind of fare. But I also remember that these tended to be low-income individuals who often needed almost an emergency kind of situation, or they'd had too much to drink, and rather than going out on the road, they, they caught a ride. And so I think that there's some aspect of public service to running a taxi company. The, the comparison with Lyft and Uber is, is another compelling part of your argument, but I think that there's an historic reason for these kinds of caps. And I'd hate to be in a situation where suddenly someone at 2:30 in the morning is, is needing a ride, and they're being charged much more than the $10. So I would, I'd be inclined to stay with the caps, and it sounds like, what I was listening, what I was hearing when you were saying is, I was thinking, why would they want to charge that much? They're going to hurt their business, but that, that's for them to set. But I think that there's some reason for having some sort of limit.
Thanks. Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, I just agree that, yeah, it seems like there shouldn't be a limit, but if they're willing to accept a limit, in fact, they're asking for an increase but not an abolishment, then I feel like, let's give them what they're asking for if it seems reasonable. But I, I do agree that I feel like you'll just hop on Uber if they charge too much, but not everybody has the ability to do that, so.
Ms. Mock?
I just wanted to mention that after meeting with Student Senate last week, it was noted to me, which I haven't taken advantage of it in Grand Forks, but students were saying that they can't get Uber and Lyft very easily, and that even sometimes with pricing and lack of availability, or maybe surge pricing, it's $60 to get across town, or something like that. So, you know, certainly not being in the business, I'm not exactly sure what taxi cab drivers are seeing, but they were noticed, noting to me that they had a hard time getting those other services, so, you know, I think we need to make sure we have transportation options for people who need them as well.
So, I'll move approval of the recommended, the staff recommendation. Move by Weber, sir, second, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Weigel's sentence, thank you. Item 2.4, reappointments to emergency management board, anyone have any issues with Mr. Weigel or? I'll move approval. Moved by Weber. Yes, please. Second by Cavami. Oh. Second by Vean, thank you, Mr. Vean. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.5, repeal city code 6-0814, bonus personal leave hours. Hi, Ms. Bovette, good evening.
Good evening, Councilmember Sandy and members of the committee. What I've brought before you today has been a recommendation to repeal a section of city code related to employee benefits. This repeal would remove a section of code that provides a benefit, a bonus leave day for employees utilizing less than eight hours of sick leave per year. There's been concerns over the past while that whether this benefit functions as intended, or rather encourages employees to come into the workplace while unwell, or even dissuades employees from receiving preventative care services. So it is city administration's desire to replace the benefits with something that would be more impactful for a greater number of employees across the city. So once this section of code, which is 60814, has been repealed, benefited employees will have the opportunity to earn additional wellness hours. As necessary to change the city code, there will be two readings at the next two city council meetings. In addition to this staff report, you also have the draft ordinance before you, as well as a letter of support from the employee representative groups for this change. And I'll answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion? Move by Dockler, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.6, plans and specs for project 8400, district number 760, reconstruction of Oak Street from 17th Avenue South to 24th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. This project, you may recall, is the reconstruction of Oak Street, about seven blocks from 17th Avenue down to 24th Avenue South. This met city council last week when it was approved, the engineer's report was approved. Since then, engineering has been finalizing the plans and specifications. There's been no major changes to the estimated cost, and we are still recommending the 80% city cost share to be paid for from Fund 4815. With that, unless there's any questions, we request approval of plans and specifications so we can go out for bid.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lieberman? Mr. Weigel?
Move approval.
Move's approval, is there a second? By Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thanks. 2.7, bid award for project 8411, district 762, Belmont Road reconstruction from 47th Avenue South to Rivers Edge Drive. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of city council, committee of the whole. As mentioned, this is the third phase of, three phases of the Belmont Road reconstruction. We have advertised it, we, we did do the bid opening on March 24th. We had received four bids. The low bid was about 7% below the engineer's estimate on that project. Low bidder is Strata Contracting, $1,463, $798.68, and we would recommend award of that project.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Cavami?
Just a quick comment on this, I think that there's been some citizen comments that have come to me regarding Phase 3 and how we're calculating things, and I would just like for the city to know and folks to know that we've met and we're talking through things, and I think we'll have a potential solution to bring forth in council regarding how we're going to assess Phase 3. With that, I'll move approval.
Move by Weigel. Is there a second? Second by? Yeah, moved by Cavami. What did I say?
Weigel.
Weigel, yeah, I'm sorry, moved by Cavami, second by Weigel, yeah. I'm looking at Danny and thinking you. Very good. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Very quickly, so, not quite a $1.5 million, how many blocks of road is this?
Oh, boy, 47th Rivers Edge is probably about three or four blocks.
Three or four blocks.
Yeah.
Dana, you and I could do that for, yeah.
Thanks. You need a good shovel, there's some storms to where that goes with this one, too.
Yeah, right, exactly, right. Any other comments? Smartass or not? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.8, bid award, project 8427, 2022 asphalt street repairs.
Thank you, President Sandy. This is our annual contract to repair small patches of asphalt that experience potholes. We put this out for bid and it was, we received bids on March 24th. We received four bids. The low bid was submitted by Op Construction, and it was roughly 9.5% under the engineer's estimate, so we are recommending award to Op Construction in the amount of $45,785.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
Mr. Lieberman, the, the roads in, in Grand Forks are getting better. We keep getting better, and so the kind of terrible springs that we had not too many years ago, we're not seeming to have that this year. Was this, but we had a rough winter. Is it just that we don't have as many potholes because our roads are in better condition, or was it not that bad a winter for potholes? Can you talk to that?
I, I think the dynamics of free saw have not changed much, but I think we've increased the funding of this program, due in large part to the sales tax increase several years ago, so we've just put more resources to fix the problems.
Great, I'll move approval. Great, move by Weber, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.9, bid award, projects 8428, 8492, and 8493, 2022 concrete street repairs, 2022 subdivision concrete rehab, and 2022 arterial street concrete rehab. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. Similar to the last contract, this one is for the concrete streets to be repaired. We did put this out for bid and received bids on March 17th. There were two bids submitted. The low bid was submitted by Tony Anderson Construction, it was roughly 2% under the engineer's estimate. We are recommending award of this contract to Tony Anderson Construction in the amount of $304,956.
Questions for Mr. Lieberman? Move by Weigel, second by Dockler, second by Vean, thank you, Mr. Vean. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.10, bid award for project 8502, concrete bike path on South Washington Street from 55th Avenue South to 59th Street. Mr. Luen, good evening.
Danielson, sorry, I'm taking this one for Carter. Yep, no problem. This item was a concrete bike path 10 feet wide being installed on South Washington Street from 55th Avenue South to 59th Avenue South, and it includes a little bit of sidewalk to connect the bike path to the adjacent street, South 14th Street. That sidewalk that's included in this project is on the rear edge of those properties, so that's going to be paid by the city. This project was also opened on the March 24th bid opening. We got four bids for this one, and the low bid was from Tony Anderson Construction in the amount of $169,000 and $273, and is about 15% below the engineer's estimate, so we are recommending award of the bid to Tony Anderson Construction.
Thank you. Any comments?
Love that bike infrastructure, there's, I'll move approval. It's about 10% of a.
Right, yes, exactly. Mr. Weber moves approval, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.11, design engineering agreement for project 8359, urban traffic signal rehabilitation.
Thank you, President Sandy. So this project is a signal rehab project that is going to address 12 signal systems at 12 different intersections across the city utilizing approximately $2.36 million of federal funding. This federal funding is through the Urban Roads Program, and the design engineering services associated with this project includes all of the necessary tasks to maintain that federal funding. The signals in this project vary in age from about 10 years old to 40 or more years old, so with that age of the signals, there's also a varying degree of condition for those signals, so this project's going to go in and either replace some dated equipment or just replace equipment that is no longer in a condition to be up on those signals. And right now, we're in the process of getting a design engineer on board, so we sent a RFP out, got proposals back in from six different firms. We interviewed three of those firms and came down to a selection of SRF engineering as the most qualified engineer for this project, and then scope and fee was negotiated with them for this project, and we are recommending SRF be approved as the engineer for the design engineering on this project for a contract amount of $360,000.
Gouzer, Mr. Danielson, thank you so much. Any comments? What, as a percentage of that total project, how much is that?
So the total project, we're, it's pretty early on at this point, but we're estimating an all-in cost on this project of about 3.7 million, where roughly three of that million is for deconstruction, so we're sitting at about a 12, 15% on engineering, which is actually pretty typical for what we're seeing on a lot of our projects right now, on these NDDOT projects.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments or thoughts? Mr. Weigel? Move by Weigel, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 212, amendment number one to engineering agreement for project 8366, Millen overlay Gateway Drive to North Washington.
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. So this project is a Millen overlay project on Mill Road from Gateway Drive up to North Washington Street, utilizing about $480,000 of federal funding that was provided to the city through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. This project is expected to be a pretty straightforward Millen overlay project with a little bit of full-depth patches where it's required on the north end of Mill Road, where it's in a little rougher shape. Houston Engineering did the design engineering for this project, and now that we've bid the project out, we're looking to get a construction engineer on board, so Houston Engineering was selected as the most qualified firm to do the construction engineering off of our pre-qualified engineers list, and we are recommending approval of a task order amendment to Houston Engineering in the amount of, one second here, it's $114,000.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Danielson? Move by Cavami, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 213, construction engineering agreement for project 8074, school flashing beacons.
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. So one more engineering agreement here, another construction engineering agreement for the flashing school beacon project, which is a project that is intended to go around to all of the flashing beacon crossings at the school sites around town, and update the electrical equipment at those signal crossings so that the city electricians can program those remotely. Currently, they have to go out to those sites and punch in the timing programs every time they want to change them at all 20-ish sites that they've got around town, so this would just provide a lot more ease of access to those beacons from their shop. This project is eligible to use federal funding for the construction engineering, so we followed all the DOT procedures when selecting a consultant engineer. We had two different firms submit on this project to be the construction engineer, and WFW Engineering was selected as the most qualified for this project, and the agreement with WFW would utilize the NDDOT standard agreement format, and we are recommending approval of an agreement with WFW for construction engineering services in the amount of $135,000 for this project.
Great, thank you. Any comments? Comments or questions? Mr. Vean, comments?
Move, move approval.
Moved by Vean, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Danielson. Item 214, discussion of bid 2021-14, front load refuse trucks awarded by council May 16, 2021. Ms. Lipsch, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and council members. Last week, we were contacted by Sanitation Products and informed that Peterbilt is not going to honor the trucks we had on order without a proposed price increase, and I included those price increases in the staff report. Front load price increase is $18,752, and the side load is $19,372. My recommendation is that we simply add the 2021 truck allotment to the 2022 trucks that we're going to be bidding here shortly.
Thank you, because you don't believe, you believe we can get a better price than the, or at least it's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot, and we're not guaranteed that we're going to get the trucks in 2022 regardless of what we do.
Got it. Mr. Weber moves approval, second by Weigel. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
215, resolution related to lead service line replacement program. Ms. Parvy, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve a resolution allowing us to go ahead and proceed for, applying for funds for the lead service, I'm sorry, the lead service line replacement program. We've gotten initial approval from the Department of, or the State Revolving Funds Department, and we're encouraged to put in the application. We had asked for $375,000. This loan is a 90% forgiveness loan, and we would like to replicate Bismarck's program and do a reimbursement for homeowners to be able to work with them to repair those service lines, I'm sorry, replace the service lines, and then they can do that at 90% cost, and we would work with them on that 10% piece that they would be responsible for.
Great, it's a great idea. Move by Mock, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Weber, and question, Mr. Weber?
The supply line, this is from the, the valve out at the road up to the home?
From the main, absolutely.
From the main up to the home, up to the meter, generally.
Um, the, from the main to the meter would be replaced, as well as from the meter to the home.
Okay, very good, thanks.
I'm sorry, from the, the curb stop, not the meter. The meter's in the home.
The meter's in the home, yeah.
Right, meter's in the home, great. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, very good. Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Item 216, Red River Valley Water Supply Project Credit Agreement for fiscal year 2021 through '23, biennium and project update. Ms. Feeling?
Chairman Sandy and members of the committee, the whole, you have approved, summarizing, this is Phase 3, or Series C as they call, of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. You have approved us moving forward. This is an additional agreement for the, the credit agreement. As part of this, our local cost share, under Series C, we did get a benefit, where the state of North Dakota did approve, through the bank in North Dakota, a 40-year, 2% loan. And so as you look through what the local cost share is, and we are still at a cost share of 75% state, under Series C, 25% local, that's broken down to where the city of Fargo is covering about 67.8% of that local cost share, we're covering about 13.3%. We're covering about 13.3%. And then Garrison diversion, there's a lot of other smaller users, they're covering 18.7% approximately. So they're picking up their share. Only the city of Fargo and the city of Grand Forks are proposing to use this bank of North Dakota loan. Garrison diversion is going to use some cash reserves to pay for their balance. And so really, the city of Fargo and city of Grand Forks are going to take advantage of this long-term, low-interest loan from the bank of North Dakota. Our share, when you look at that 13.3%, is 2.4 million, and so you've approved us moving forward as, as part of that cost share. Our 2.4 will go into a, a, a bank in North Dakota loan at 2% 40 years. Fargo in a similar way, in a similar time period, is planning to propose that same way. I think as we move forward beyond the, and this is again, Series C was for the '21 to '23 biennium, which is our current biennium, we're going to work really hard because we want to really move forward with a, with a strategy to get this project done sooner rather than later. We've had a lot of discussion, whether it's been Fu Fang related or whether it's been, you know, last summer related about we should get this project done sooner rather than later, especially with Minot and Fargo getting their flood protection projects kind of underway and getting a cost share. This is probably the next big project for the state of North Dakota. The '21 to '23 is paying for the Missouri River intake, some pipeline land acquisition, and of course, professional services kinds of things. But when you look at next session and beyond, what the strategy is to try to move it from a 10-year build to a six-year build, and we all know what's going on with inflation, so that's going to require more upfront funding from the state of North Dakota. Obviously, with oil right now, it's not good for everybody in the world, but it's good for the state coffers right now. So if we're going to really kind of contract with the state and, and get a good deal and get a, a long-term strategy and reduce that, I think now is the time to do it. So the goal is to get a six-year bill versus a 10-year. Again, move forward to longer-term loan, loan program through the bank of North Dakota for local users like Grand Forks and Fargo, and try to maintain affordable cost shares. And so really, that's our strategy. There's one additional thing. There's a hybrid approach that's come up, and I, I'm sure you didn't look through the details of the PowerPoint, but there's another strategy as opposed to just using an intake on the Missouri River, using a bunch of pipe to get us to the, the Lake Ash Tabula and get it into the Cheyenne River into the Red River. There is a thought now to try to use the McCluskey Canal, which is the Federal Works. So there is an option. So the state plan, what I just described with a lot of pipe, using the Missouri River as the only source, that's about a $1.22 billion project. The sense is if we use this hybrid where we can use some of the McCluskey Canal, we could reduce that to 1 billion. So it's in the state's best interest, and it's in the locals' best interest. And there is some positivity that, from Senator Hoven, that let's, let's try to make this happen. And we've hoped for this for a long time, so we're going to make another run at that that would save us a lot of money if we could, if we're able to do that. And so we still are going to build the intake on the Missouri River, and hence the hybrid. It gives us some redundancy as we move forward. But just so you know, those are the strategies working, and I think it'll be one of our primary, really talking points for the city of Grand Forks, working with our partners as we work through the next legislative session. So lots of positivity, and I think the state legislatures, legislators have understood now that with this natural gas pipeline coming, it, that's important for not only serving communities like Rugby, building agri-business development in our community, but we're going to need some long-term redundant water supply too, if we're going to serve eastern North Dakota and do all these things. So lots of positives that are moving our way, and hopefully after the Series Cs that you approve, we can come back after the next session with a long-term agreement with Lake Agassay Water Authority, with Garrison diversion, with the cities of Fargo and, and Grand Forks, and with the state of North Dakota. That should really be our goal, that this is the last time you work on this, and then we come up with a long-term strategy to get the project done sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Could I, I have one question. How are we going to pay back the loan?
Right now, we're going to pay back through rates.
Utility fees.
Yes, utility fees, yeah.
Great, so we at least do have a revenue source to pay it back.
We do.
Great. Yeah, Mr. Weber.
The six-year, oh, did Mr. Veen?
I'm sorry, Mr. Veen, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I guess I, I just wanted to talk in support of what, what Todd has presented today. I know he brought up the long-term need, which has existed for, for a long, long time, about getting a, a second water source for, potable water, for raw water source, which is absolutely critical for us. So this is an avenue for getting that done, and I think this is, this is an interim. I think that the next most important thing that's going to happen, that's going to come up, is a long-term project participation agreement that, that will hopefully be aligned with getting the project completed. I like what Todd said for getting it down to a six-year build. Otherwise, there's just too much uncertainty and risk, and we need to work with our legislators and the Water Commission and others for the long term. So, you know, being your rep on the Lake Agassay Water Authority and having the added responsibility of our Garrison diversion conservancy district representing Grand Forks County, I think this is the natural next step. We need this water supply, and this is the best way to move it forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Veen. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Was that a motion for Mr. Veen?
Was that a motion, Mr. Veen? Was that a motion?
It was, thank you.
I'll, I'll second the motion, and then I just have some clarifying questions, Mr. Phelan. The six-year versus 10-year build, six-year gives a little more confidence about the process and, and the pricing. 10-year, you're dealing with inflation and some more uncertainty. So even though six-year might be a little more expensive, it, it could end up being less expensive, right, for all those reasons?
Chairman Sandy and council member Weber, the estimated cost savings is about 100 million if you can reduce the timeframe to, to build that facility. And obviously, in order to do that, we need the state of North Dakota to step up on their 75%, and obviously, we're going to have to also. But it is a real cost savings of what they're estimating.
The other thing, we've been talking about this for a while, and I don't know how I've missed this, but I didn't realize, it makes sense, East Grand Forks will also be a beneficiary of this, and they will, they're, they're a partner in this financially as well? How does that work?
Yep, Chair Sandy and council member Weber, they are. And so as part of our, I think we're 13.39%, they're, I'm going to say 1% or so of, of that is, is East Grand Forks, so they are tied together. They're going to have to prove separately too. But it's a, it's a big deal that we include them as part of our metro. When you look at the Fargo metro, it's Fargo, West Fargo, Cass rural water, probably some of the other surrounding communities. So it's really the Fargo metro, and for, for us, it's Grand Forks and it's East Grand Forks. We have an interconnect between the two communities for times of, you know, where we need to share water back and forth. It serves about a million gallons per day, so we'd use that intercity emergency pipeline between our two cities to serve East Grand Forks. We have an intake on the Red River, East Grand Forks does not, they only have an intake on the Red Lake River. So we're going to have to provide water, not only to East Grand Forks, but if there's other rural water providers that are going to need water supply, we're the only entity in and around this area that's going to be able to draw water from the Red River and, and supply to our greater region.
Great.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Good question, Mr. Weber. Any other, there's a motion and a second? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 217, thank you. Fu Fang USA Project Due Diligence Update. Mr. Phelan.
Sounds good. I, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and Chairman Sandy, if you wouldn't maybe mind dimming the lights, it might help show up. I'll wait for Cheryl to get, oh, there we go. So this evening, we haven't been back with you to provide an update, so we're going to provide you a progress update since we last met with you, probably a month or so ago. So I'm going to start out, Sean Gaddy's going to come here on behalf of our consulting group. And you're, the consulting group of the city is, is A2S, it's Black and Beach, it's Bolton and Mankin, it's WFW. Right now, that's the, kind of the team that's been working behind the scenes on a lot of these activities. And then also, Mr. Hodak is going to come up and give you an overview, and Mr. Brooks. And really, we're teaming up. This plan is to propose to go to planning and zoning as part of an annexation on next week, Wednesday, April 6. And so one of the requirements is that we need to, you know, further along the environmental, and we need to look at the specials and the taxes and how we're going to serve this area. So we've, we've been meeting with a lot of property owners, and so really, in, in advance, what we've said at all of our meetings, we're speaking on behalf of the administration and on the city council, all the, a lot of the plans that we have in front of you would have to be approved by the city council, but we feel like we have a sense of where you want us to go. So we really, but that's a part, important part of this brief, that we get, let you know kind of what we've assumed, what we've been working on to get your buy-in on what we've provided to a, a lot of the meetings that we have. So with that, we'll start and kick it off. We also have Mr. Bitner, he works for Bolton and Mank, he's on virtually. And so we have one slide that Sean's going to go over on the traffic study, so if you really want to dig down in the details, Mr. Bitner is on, on screen, and he can go through more depth if you want. A lot of these environmental studies, we're still at draft state, but we want to get you a situational update, kind of where we're at. Again, you, you've, we've been working on environmental review processes, I won't go through, but all the environmental processes, as people have asked, and they've come up to this podium and say, I want, I, I want answers, so we're going to try to go through where we're at on those. The other part was utility services. How are we going to serve all these various properties, including Fu Fang? We have some updates on those. You asked us to go through the annexation area, not only the Fu Fang area, but also the adjacent Highway 81 corridor and 27th Avenue North. We have some information both on special assessments and taxation and valuations. I'm going to give you an update on some of the city, city funding strategies on behalf of the team. We've, I'm going to give you some national security outreach that the mayor and I have done, give you an update on kind of what are some of our findings. And then finally, we're going to have Ryan Brooks to come up on planning and zoning, just so you get a heads up on what we're planning for next week, Wednesday. Again, I, I talked about this, Black and Beach has been our national consultant to really look at this from a strategic perspective. We have some really strong local and regional consultants, but we've added Black and Beach to the team. They've added this environmental matrix. I think we sent that out to you just for your review. It kind of categorizes all the different environmental pieces that we're working on, kind of the progress we're making, work that we'll continue to update that as we move forward. We've met with Fu Fang on, on several different things, items, and they've given us information, updated information on traffic, they've given us updated information on water and wastewater, other environmental things like air permitting. And so they have worked with us in, in concert, and so when we've asked for information, they've delivered it, some of which we've, we have translated from Mandarin to English, and so we, in advance of waiting for it to be translated. And the firms of A2S and, and Black and Beach have been able to translate that, so we can get moving sooner rather than later, as opposed to waiting for all the translations to occur. And as I said, all this is in draft, but we want to give you a heads up, and, and we know others are probably interested where we are too, so this is a stage. So this is, this is that matrix that Black and Beach put together, and we'll continue to update this and, and provide this to you in advance. And as we go through today, Sean Gaddy is going to do the brunt of the work of going through all these particular areas as we go through the PowerPoint presentation. So that, I'd hand it off to Sean.
Thanks, Todd. I was going to say, thank you, President Sandy, members of City Council, but he's disappeared, so thank you, members of the City Council. Just to hit a little bit in more detail, some of the things that Todd mentioned on the prior slide is around all of the items we're looking at in that environmental tracking matrix. I'm just going to kind of go quickly, one by one, for some of the items that we've gathered some more information on in order to give an update on our, our progress and where we're at with the consulting team review, working with the city. One of the really big ones that we have been reviewing, and we've got quite a bit of information in hand now, just in the last few weeks, from the Fu Fang design team, is on their wastewater effluent requirements. And so we've really been looking at this, I'll call it two-sided. You know, typically, when we look at an industry, that industry is going to have industrial pretreatment, and we're going to be concerned with what's coming out the back end of that industrial pretreatment that the city ultimately will have to treat and then discharge to the city's permit with, with the state of North Dakota. In this case, we're really wanting to make sure that we are reviewing things appropriately. And so when I said a two-sided review, we've asked them for both their raw industrial wastewater effluent characterizations, as well as their then-post-pre-treated characterizations. And with that, we've also asked them for their pretreatment system designs. This graphic on the right-hand side of this, this slide is some of the initial schematics they've provided to us around their pretreatment system designs, and so they are giving us really good information, both in terms of flow and, and then, like I said, strength characterizations, but then as well with their, their system designs in order for us to verify that what they're proposing to do with their treatment is going to work for the city. That's a more robust step than we've taken more recently with, with many in the past, just to make sure that we really do understand what's happening. So ourselves, A2S, Black and Beach are really rolling up our sleeves on this. One of the biggest things we've noticed with their, their industrial effluents, their wastewater effluents, is that, that wastewater is going to be relatively lower strength than existing industry the city's already serving. And so the, what's called the BOD, or the biochemical oxygen demand, the CODs, chemical oxygen demands, those are all relatively less in a raw form than what other industry, SIMPLOT, RRB are treating. And so their pretreatment system is going to be a little bit different than what RRB and, and SIMPLOT have in place, which is anaerobic systems. Their, the Fu Fang system is proposed to be an aerobic system because of that lesser strength, and that's a, a big piece. We've actually created our own process model for their wastewater effluent to take a look at. It's, like I said, it's, it's ability to treat that raw wastewater, and we're really just kind of getting into the details of that, looking at redundancy of systems, making sure that they can operate in certain downtimes with certain portions of the system. So we're, we're taking, like I said, a deep dive on that and, and providing comment and waiting for information to come back to us.
And we didn't do this with Red River Bio Refinery, is that correct?
We did not. We asked them for what their pretreatment system was going to be and what its effluent characteristics were going to be, and ultimately, they've had issues with that achieving those, those discharge strengths. We've gone one step beyond.
Yeah, so this is a step beyond that, and reasonably looking at the numbers, you're more confident that there would be checks in place even if their pretreatment didn't work as well?
Big thing we're looking at is redundancy.
Okay.
Redundancy in their systems. Should a blower go down? Should they lose diffusers? Those sorts of things that they've got the ability to turn stuff off and then still have the capacity to, to treat the effluent.
And I think, I think we owe it to people to break it down just a little bit. So nobody has the right to just discharge untreated wastewater. So when we're talking about this facility coming on, we're talking about having an industrial pretreatment permit between them and the city of Grand Forks, correct? And then the city of Grand Forks has a permit for their discharge to the Red River that we have to meet, and we do that with the state of North Dakota because they have primacy from EPA. So I think we owe it to people to lay that out. So we'll keep them within permit limitations that the city sets, based on some of the due diligence that you're doing now, and we have to meet the state standards.
You're exactly right.
Okay.
Ms. Parvy, you know, essentially, it's two steps of permitting. They have to meet the city permit in order for the city to meet their permit to discharge to the river. Yep.
I just wanted that explained, so people can understand.
Sean, this is, this is, I like your idea of the redundancy. That's obviously really, really beneficial. What happens if they don't get it to the strengths that they indicated? You know, is, is there an issue there or potential problem?
If, if they cannot get it to the strengths that they're indicating and that we will permit them for, we will, just like what we've done with others recently, not allow them to discharge to their full capability. They'll still have to meet their, their ultimate loading requirements that we'll place to their permit, and if, and if the only way to do that is to reduce their operations to get there, that's what will have to happen.
Okay, so there, there is an avenue to, to make sure that that's done appropriately.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sean, the enforcement mechanism for that? I mean, we just simply only accept so much from them, but how often is that checked? Is that constantly being monitored? Is it once a year? Can you help me understand?
So for the existing industry, they sample daily. Lisa, Lisa Bottens in the crowd here, I believe you check weekly, correct? Spot check weekly. So the, the industries sample their affluent daily, provide those samples to the city, and then the city, once a week, has access to go in and self-sample then to spot-check the results that are being provided by the industry. Not, I'll cover stormwater here real quickly. Not a lot new has been submitted. A lot of the details on, on stormwater and drainage requirements will ultimately get submitted when they're father along and their, their detailed site grading drainage plans. You know, there's, there's a handful of different regulations that are going to be required. We've hit on these a little bit in past discussions, but they've got a storm, a construction stormwater permit and what's called a construction stormwater pollution prevention plan they'll have to provide. To operate the site, they'll have what's called an industrial stormwater pollution prevention plan for site operations. They'll have specific requirements to what they're managing on-site for materials. That's actually done at the state level. And another step that we're taking that is maybe above and beyond what we would typically do, that's not typically, that industrial site operations permit is not typically reviewed by the city, it's reviewed by the state. We've asked to see a copy of that when it's available. We're a little bit of ways from that being available, but we have asked to see for that as well. Related to any hazardous materials or oil products that they'll have on-site, they have another federal requirement, which is to develop and maintain what's called a spill prevention, control and countermeasure plan on the site. We've also asked to see that when, when it's available. There's quite a bit of crossover between that document and the industrial stormwater permitting document. And then in addition, for the northern areas of site, they, they are proposing or there is interface with the city's flood protection project. One of the bigger things we've learned recently is just to expedite their permitting, try and make things more streamlined. They are proposing at this time to develop primarily to the south of where that flood protection system interface boundary would, would ultimately require them to, to work with the cores. So essentially drain everything south through the city's permitting process into the English Cooley, not north to the English Cooley diversion. Just, they have, they think they have the ability with their, their site to do that, to compress all of their initial site features to the south. And we haven't seen that plan yet, but that was just indicated to us last week. So that's one of the bigger things that's come up more recently.
Sean, question on that. And the city has the capacity, if the gates are closed, to be able to pump all that water? Is that right?
Sorry, the city has the capacity in the diversion channel?
Yeah, I mean, in the pumping stage, in the pumping station, because the gates would close and then, you know, during, during flood events, we would just have to pump that water during, again, during the flood event.
That's correct, Mr. Vian. And I'll get to this in a moment. I do have an update on where we're at with the stormwater and drainage master plan. But one of the biggest things to ensure the city maintains that capacity for the English Cooley pump station is that we're providing, and the project is providing enough storage for stormwater in order for it to accumulate before, and be stored before it's pumped when the gates are closed. So that, that is true, and we are looking at that specifically within the requirements of the, the stormwater master planning that I'll, I'll show in a moment.
And if I may, Mr. Gaddy, I've been hearing that the Fufang plant is going to be dumping their wastewater into the English Cooley. We're talking about stormwater discharge.
This is drainage.
Very, very different than what's, what's being said.
Their wastewater will all go through the city's wastewater treatment.
Of course, of course.
I believe there was some confusion from a couple of meetings ago where we were talking about some, what I would call non-processed wastewater's having the ability to directly discharge them to the river. That would be like cooling water, nothing that has gone through biological processes or any of the fermentation. It would just be water that's essentially been heated up. That we're still evaluating, but more likely than not, everything right now, what we're looking at for the alternatives in the wastewater facility plan is for all of that water to make its way to the city's wastewater treatment plant.
So there is some water that could come directly from the plant into the, the Cooley system, but that would be the raw water being used in their system for cooling, basically a radiator kind of operation. And that, some of that may end up back in the, the English Cooley, but that's still being investigated.
As everybody else is not looking like that, I was just clarifying that there was some confusion to that. And that's the type of water we were talking about.
Okay. And that, even that's a far call from this idea that the plant is just dumping their wastewater into the, the Cooley.
Correct. Another item, a big item here within the environmental tracking matrix. This is something Black and Beach, more specifically their industrial team is looking at, so I'll do my best to cover this. The air pollution, emission, dust and odor items, we have, again, like I said, like, like Mr. Phelan mentioned, developed a pretty robust information request on all of these items, trying to understand where they're at in their air permitting process and meeting all of those regulatory requirements, but then also just trying to understand their operations and where these sources of potential emissions are going to be. They have not formally submitted their air permit to the state yet. In another move we wouldn't typically do, we would leave that up to the state normally to, to review that air permit, but we have asked them to make us aware of when that submittal is made and provide us a copy of the submittal in order for Black and Beach to, to help us sift through all of the detail. They have, even prior to submitting that to the state though, provided quite a bit of information. This information just came through last week on dust sources and volumes, what their mitigation strategies will be for that. So as I understand, in the corn milling process, when there's receiving of dry corn, management of that, that dry product is, you know, potentially a source of dust. And so how they, they house that and bag that and all of those sources, they provided that information to Black and Beach for review. Order mission sources and concentrations and treatment strategies, I've seen some of that information come through that is currently under review. Steam and thermal plume sources, so looking at where their cooling towers are going to be located, what is the, the potential scale of those cooling operations. And then we will ultimately be looking for both orders and then the, the plume analysis, scoping out some further study of that on the city's behalf, very similar to what the NPN project just recently went through in order to evaluate any potential impacts from, from those areas of the plant.
Can I ask you a question about that as well?
Yep.
This may be too early, but you, I'll let you decide. Professor Steve Morrison, someone whose opinion I often respect very much, has written a letter in the Herald, published in the Herald about this. One of his concerns was air pollution, including the, the claim that it's just primarily steam being released into the air. He then quotes a 1994 EPA agency study, but this is the, the study he quoted, that had concerns about wet corn milling plants emitting sulfur dioxide and also VOCs. Well, can, can you talk to those? Is it too early to discuss those?
I am by no means a wet corn milling expert or air permitting expert. I do know that from some of our preliminary reviews with, with Black and Beach's industrial team, they do commonly use sulfur dioxide in what's called the steeping process. So essentially as they receive the corn and they start to break down the kernels, that's placed into a sulfur dioxide solution that helps them in that process. That does have some off-gassing, as I understand it. We have asked some questions of Fufang and how they plan to manage that. They've provided some information, not all the information yet, as far as how that process will be housed, where those tanks will be. The indications will be indoors and before any air is released, there'll be scrubbing of that air in, in order to make sure that there aren't, you know, like I said, noxious discharges of it. That is about the superficial level of the understanding of that piece of the process that I have, but we have been asking those questions. And there is some accuracy in, in that statement that that's the type of, type of material they're using to break down the corn kernel. But they also do have, like I said, scrubbing processes that they'll be putting in place that we're reviewing.
Possibly very different processes than what they had 30 years ago in the, the 94 study. But we're going, you're asking those questions. We're going to get information on that. That's going to be one of the contingency points that we're going to be asked to, to decide upon, right? Similarly, any, any comment about VOCs at this point?
Just that we're reviewing all the capitals.
That'll come in that study as well.
Yes.
Okay. Similarly, one of the arguments that I've heard against the, one of the few that I've found to be at all concerning, maybe convincing, is that this plant will have a greater impact on the north side neighborhoods. So whether it's chemical air pollution or, I mean, dust is, is another form of air pollution, will we have some sense of the impact of these, you know, what, what the plant will be putting into the air? My house puts stuff into the air. Everybody puts something into the air. What we, what the plant would be putting into the air, will we get some sense of that? Not just source, what will be coming out at the source, but how it will be dispersed over our, our city? Will that be part of the study?
So that would not be city study, that would be state study. So on the very first item here, Title V air permit, that would be a piece to what the state would review. I don't know if the project will be what's called a PSD, Discharger Point of Significant Discharge Discharger within the Title V process. Whether they are or they aren't, once that submittal is made to the state, will dictate how much review will go into things like air dispersion modeling in order to understand, you know, as it's dispersed, you know, what will the impacts of that be? Again, that's all going to occur within the state's permitting process. We've just asked to make sure that we get an opportunity to, to play a part in that as far as what's submitted and what the state's reviews are, instead of just getting an opportunity to comment to the very end.
And I want to make sure I understood that. So if it, if it achieves, if there's a certain threshold of contaminants being discharged, then it goes to a different level of study by the state. If it's below that level, it, it doesn't go to that next study.
It will always be studied, but to the level at which they have to, you know, model and, and provide proof changes at different levels.
And again, we would be getting that information along the way. This would be another one of our decision points.
Correct.
Based upon the development agreement.
Correct. I think I hit everything here. On the traffic study, the draft traffic study has been completed and submitted to the North Dakota Department of Transportation. As Todd mentioned, we do have Mr. Mike Bittner from Bolton &amp; Menck on the phone to answer any of your more detailed questions. I've been able to do pretty well so far, Mr. Weber, but I'll defer to him if, if you go into any detail on this. Real high level, you know, Mr. Bittner's study took a close look at traffic counts and distributions. And so truck counts, vehicle, vehicle trips for personnel, plant maintenance workers, and that distribution essentially looked at how much coming from the east, from Minnesota side, how much do we expect from the, the west, Highway 2, south, north on Interstate 29? And then ultimately, how that will distribute and, and access based on input from, from Fufang on where trucks would be expected to either enter on 27th Avenue North or on 42nd Street to the west and, and south of the plant. And that's essentially what you can see here highlighted in the purple. The study, purple routings there, the study did recommend a handful of improvements. Those improvements were characterized into those that are either recommended prior to startup and/or improvements that we would place more on a long-term watch list of considerations, dependent upon how plant operations ultimately play out. You can see those improvements listed here under items number two and three. I do, or I did hear today that hot off the press, the DOT has provided some comments back, their initial comments. And I'm sorry, Mr. Bittner, if you're, if you're looking at this slide online, I wasn't able to get it updated in time. But a couple of the, the Department of Transportation's comments were for, for two of the items, essentially the, the second bullet and the fourth bullet here related to the left turn lanes on US 2 and 42nd, and then Washington and US 2. The DOT would like to see consideration for those to be a prior to startup improvement, not a, a watch list improvement. And so that is something that's being considered in those reviews. Overall, you can see here under the, the preliminary impact assessment that the, the type of traffic we're talking about here relative to the background network is considered not to be significant with the improvements that are outlined here, will be manageable with those improvements in place. And I guess with that, I'd stand for any detailed questions that I will immediately defer to Mr. Bittner on the phone.
Any questions?
Sean, or to Mr. Bittner, did you look at the impacts of traffic and rail? And especially the, the tracks going, of course, north across Gateway Drive?
Yeah, we did. As part of the projection system, we did provide us with rail movements, but it was more a matter of number of cars, not all train movements that be distributed by the, the facility. And so what happened is we have an existing train come by and they add a couple of cars to that train. And so as we started to look through the overall data and add those to the movements, it wasn't really expanding those delays to a significant amount, certainly crossing a US highway to the south is a unique situation. But specific to this facility, it wasn't exacerbating those situations beyond what we're really, are seeing.
So the one, the one thing that just came to my mind was if you extend the rail, I guess, I, I've heard from one individual even before this project came up, that when you have a railroad, a train crossing Highway 2 and you start having cars backed up on Highway 2, it impacts northbound interstate traffic and starts backing it up onto interstate. And the longer that train is, the longer your impact is. It isn't just, you know, the number of times, but it's the length of time. Is that a concern at all?
I think the general problem of blocking US 2 gateway is certainly a challenge in and of itself. And there are specific requirements by the Federal Rail Administration, FRA and Federal Highway Administration, HWA. You do have certain criteria that are typically met before they warrant, you know, there's certain warrants for great separation. And this location actually doesn't meet those today. There's been some studies that, there were a couple of different occasions in the past that looked at rerouting the mill spur over and adding different train increases. And so we're going to have doubling and tripling in different planning scenarios, and it wasn't meeting those warrants to get a great separation. And that's not saying you can't do that, but like when you compare 42nd to 40th, it really pales in comparison to the amount of trains, which typically about two trains per day during the day and then two at night, based on the FRA's data. And so I certainly understand that it's not an ideal situation at stop, but the overall increase, you know, is very specific to the different bank site, is not really changing that overall situation to the point that it would, you know, double or triple queue lengths. We're talking, you know, really a matter of more seconds than, than overall longer durations.
Okay, thank you. If I may, Mr. Bittner, Mr. Gaddy, rail cars, 63 rail cars per week, truck traffic, well, that's, that's just personal vehicles, 281 trips per day. Truck traffic, we're looking at what, maybe a little over 200 a day. I don't know if, if that's a lot or not. I, I live close to Minnesota Avenue. I believe there are thousands of vehicles use that road each day. So it's hard for me to know, is, is this a big number? Is it a concerning number? Is it not? It, it actually sounds like a relatively minor number of increased vehicles. Can you give me an idea how to compare this to like beet harvest in, in the fall? Or is there some metric you can help me?
Yeah. I can do that perfectly with the harvest. Despite comparison, US 2, sections of US 2 has upwards of 20,000 vehicles per day on certain sections, and about 1,800 trucks per week. And so you need to remember that we're distributing that throughout the week, we're distributing that throughout the day. And typically industrial sites have far more even distribution of people calling in and out, whereas some of those other peaking, you know, more peaky sites like the school dumps a lot of traffic in and out at a short duration of time. But also we've got lots of different entrances, you know, big entrances to I-29, US 2.
Mr. Bittner, I'm, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but if I understood right, you said 22,000 vehicles going along Highway 2 through Grand Forks on a daily basis? Is that right?
There's about, sorry, I'll speak up. There's about 20,000 vehicles per day on portions of US 2 and kind of the peak areas. And so this is very small comparison. There's, there's few sites that have this much size property-wise relative to the amount of traffic. As you think of like a Walmart, just, you know, size, you can get upwards of five to 10,000 vehicles per day. And so this is very large, very large site in terms of actual traffic volumes. It's pretty mighty.
Excellent. Yeah, I think you gave me a great metric to help me understand that there are over 20,000 vehicles a day along that, that stretch, and we're talking about an additional couple hundred vehicles a day added because of the, this project. That helps me to put it into some context. Thanks.
There are a few other items that we're not as deep into, so probably a little bit more information and context on the prior few slides here. But we, we have asked for other information from project developers, and it's in various forms at this point as far as what they've submitted to us. On the solid waste side of things, we did get a preliminary solid waste profile from them last week. We haven't had a chance to really clarify and scour that information as well as ask them some more detailed information on their disposal plans, you know, whether that is disposal plans to the city's landfill, whether they have other alternative off-ramps for some of those materials. That's information yet to come. We have also, we've talked a little bit about a few materials per Mr. Weber's questions, but we have asked them for a complete hazardous materials roster as would be defined by federal regulations. We're yet to be in receipt of that. You know, they have indicated preliminarily some of their more significant chemical deliveries to the site are going to be things like anhydrous ammonia. A lot of that has to do with the rail traffic we were just talking about, rail and truck traffic is delivery of that type of material for their process. Common, what we call agricultural type of, of chemical that is used in, in their process. There are others, but this would be what's going to be most significant in volume as we understand it that they'll be dealing with. But we will get, like I said, a broader roster. We'll be reviewing that roster as far as volumes, locations in the facility, if anything has unique requirements from, say, a fire department planning and, and safety management standpoint, reviewing that with Mr. Lorenz and, and his team, once we have more of that information in hand. I have also asked for more detailed information on noise sources from the sites. They've made some preliminary indication of the type of equipment that is going to be their primary generators of noise, but as we get deeper into looking at actually facility design plans, those locations, what actual equipment will be in place and whether it has insulation or dampening measures included, that all is, is further information to come. I accidentally carried a bullet down underneath lighting, but we have provided lighting ordinances to the, the design team as well to make sure that they are aware of what's going to be required. Again, it's just been more verbal statements to this point on the type of lighting that they don't expect anything to be excessive, but we'll get more information on that at this point.
If I may, anhydrous ammonia, scary sounding stuff, but actually this is fairly common chemical in, in the ag industry. We already have anhydrous ammonia moving through our community because we're in a, in an agricultural area. Is that correct?
Yeah, and stored in bulk.
And stored in bulk currently, already being done. Noise studies, especially from fans, can you give me a sense, the, the fans currently used, for instance, at the North Dakota State Mill? I get complaints about the, the fan noise there sometimes. This is going to be a little further north? Are the fans going to be bigger, smaller, less noisy? We'll be looking at that?
We'll be looking at that, but I can't tell you that answer right now.
Very good. And then when we did the trip to Nebraska and Iowa, I, I remember driving up to these plants early in the morning, there was a lot of light pollution, but these are plants that had been built some time ago. That's another thing that's going to be studied here.
Correct.
Yep. Thanks.
Sean, a couple of questions. I'll start with, with the lighting. Obviously you could have, I mean, lighting design now is such that you don't have all that lighting pollution, and that could be a pretty easily resolved issue, I would take with, with the light pollution. Is that right?
You know, that's what they've indicated to us. If there's concerns, they'll have ways to mitigate it. But again, we don't have their actual lighting designs, et cetera, in hand to, to even comment it at this point, so we'll, we'll be waiting to see on what those concerns might be.
Yeah, and, and a couple of other questions or thoughts. The noise ordinance, again, we already have ordinances that they would have to, anybody that would have to comply with, with the ordinance for noise. And of course, they're located some distance from the property line. Isn't that accurate from, where you would typically measure it from?
I don't know that I could actually comment on exactly where their, their noise admission points are going to be relative to property lines. I mean, that still all has to be reviewed, but to your point of you have an ordinance in place, it's exactly what we've provided them as far as the standards they're going to have to meet. And so they're aware of that, and we'll be working through, you know, how they'll design their facility to meet those requirements and demonstrate them to us.
Okay, thanks. One last thing on, on the solid waste. I know you said you've got to get more information from them to really do the right follow-up on that. You don't have any idea how much or what the volume of solid waste are at this point either?
I did see a table in what was provided to Black and Beach last week. I don't have those numbers placed to memory at this point. So, so they have provided some preliminary indication to that, and that's what I'm saying. Black and Beach hasn't reviewed that in detail yet as far as those volumes and, like I said, disposal plans. So I, I can't comment specifically on it at this point, but I do know they have given us some of that information that's in review.
Okay, thank you.
I'll kind of quickly zoom here before turning back over to Todd through some of the utility service concepts. Just much of the information we just presented there primarily fell was our, our task order number one, which is our overall program support on kind of all things specific to their plant and project and what we'd be reviewing. You know, we did have a few other task orders, one of them specifically being the corridor utility right-of-way analysis. We have put quite a bit of work, and a lot of this became the foundation for the assessment analysis that you'll, you'll hear more about in a moment. Quite a bit of work looking at 27th Avenue corridor, the other various corridors where we're going around the plant site to be routing utilities to make sure, one, we have the right-of-way necessary from the plant site itself in order to, to fit those utilities around and make sure we're asking for the right dedications within their, their plat. But then also for areas that aren't specifically right adjacent to their property where there's some pinch points, maybe more on the eastern end of 27th Avenue North near Highway 81, as well as the western end of 27th near 42nd Street. Just making sure that we know how we're going to get the, the handful, or I'll call them multiple utilities, raw water, wastewater sanitary sewer systems, forest mains, potable water, storm piping. There's quite a bit more that we're, we're looking at routing than would be typical in, say, your standard residential development. So we've, we've done a pretty close look to this point, working with WFW, our team, the engineering department team on where all of these utilities will need to go in those various corridors and making sure, like I said, we've got the space to place them there and they're, they're getting to the right points as far as serving the, the plant site and the adjacent annexation area properties. A lot of this work was, like I said, done foundation for the assessment analysis, what has allowed us to develop quantities that ultimately generated a lot of the estimates for the, the cost estimates. So we've made, because of that and the, the emphasis on that, that assessment analysis being a priority, we're quite a ways into this in the, in the urban areas of the projects or more, more specifically around Fu Fang. There are, there is some more work to do that we've just kind of started looking into, which is more the rural sections for routing new forest mains to the wastewater plant and new raw water supply lines from the water plant to the site location. So more work to be done there, like I said, on those rural portions, but good progress made on the, the more urban sections, especially in the, in the annexation areas. Another piece of that was looking at lift station service area analysis, and we do have, I believe, we have Mr. Bergam here from WFW in the crowd. We're looking at a handful of options. This is just one of those options. Everything from how we would have traditionally done this, where you, you put a new deep station centered relatively somewhere in the middle of the overall service area we're trying to accomplish, and then routing sanitary sewer gravity pipes out from that location. One of the new things we're looking at, given the magnitude of industrial flow we're now talking about, not just industrial flow for, for the Fu Fang project, but that in combination with existing flow from other industry right adjacent to the area, is potentially managing all of that different. That's actually the option I chose to show here. That would be more on what we're looking at as like a booster station type of fashion. And so instead of digging a large deep hole in the center, actually asking the industries to initially pump their own wastewater to us and then us boost it to the wastewater plant. Under an option like this, we actually could potentially avoid building a new deep domestic sanitary station and route those flows through, excuse me, through some repurposing of existing station, of the existing station in the area. So we don't have all the answers to this, but it's just to give an overview as far as what we're looking at, we are looking at some things differently to try to really improve how we manage industrial wastewater flows in this, in this area of the city. Another big item that we have spent a decent amount of time on, we've had a handful of meetings at this point, is working with the interface with the Agassi Raw Water System. One of the things that we found out to our surprise a handful of months ago now was Agassi actually had quite a few existing pipelines routed right underneath the, the proposed Fu Fang site. And so this kind of became a priority for us to initially figure out. We have really looked at this in kind of a two-step manner, working with Mr. Phelan, Mr. Gostad, Dan Hanson in the Water Department, Melanie Parvi and Lisa Baden in Public Works, looking, looking through all of, all of what is going to be required to reconfigure service, maintain service while the plant is being developed, and then ultimately develop the long-term plan for service and what will be some sort of customer transfer type of arrangement agreement. Mr. Gostad has begun working with Agassi's attorney, at least initially, on what some of those options will be. What I will say is getting out of the way and, and being able to, to, like I said, move those pipes that are there and maintain service to the customers. We've come up with a relatively quick and cheap option for that, working with Agassi's general manager and Dan Hanson in the Water Department. And so that piece has been figured out. That's essentially the map we're showing you here on how we would disconnect and reconnect pipe networks in order to allow Agassi to, to maintain that service. And there's more work to do than on the long-term arrangement, but at least that initial piece to allow us to proceed quickly when required has been figured out. I am, like I said, working with Agassi closely on that. Mr. Gostad, I don't know if you'd add anything to that?
No, we, there, there'll be two components. There'll be a, an agreement to deal with the interim service to basically abandon the pipes that are in existence so that development can occur. And then as Mr. Gaddy mentioned, then a, a second agreement that's more long-term with respect to those customers that would be in that, in that area.
How many customers are we talking about?
I don't know right off the top of my head. I don't think it's that many.
Probably around 30. I mean, we've asked them for a complete customer roster so we could look at, you know, the exact customer base, where they're located, how much water they're using. We just haven't received that yet.
Thanks.
Referenced earlier in the affluent review, the facility plan update, so there's really two big pieces to what we're looking at for wastewater service. One is very, very related to Fu Fang, and it's what they're going to give us. The second is related to Fu Fang and beyond for the rest of the community. You will recall that we did submit a facility plan to city council, I believe it was around May of last year. Really what the materialization of this project did was accelerate a lot of the things that we were discussing within that facility plan that was submitted, like I said, mid-2021. What we've really been looking at closely is what assumptions does what we now know about Fu Fang change about our original facility plan effort? And generally, we're, we're talking about more flow and loading and having to do things quicker. So that's the, that's the biggest piece of what's being looked at within the facility plan update. What I just mentioned about what we know of flow and loading and how it changes assumptions, that's really the first two items I have listed here on the slide as far as the industrial, the detailed review of that loading and then updating our basis of planning assumptions. We have done some preliminary alternative screening with city staff, looking through what's going to be the best way to potentially modify the alternatives as they were presented in the facility plan last year. And we'll be working through some next steps on that here in, in the coming months. Those steps include sizing, you know, resizing of those alternatives, updating cost estimates, taking a real close look at speed of delivery. Time was our friend before. If things do proceed quickly with Fu Fang, it's not so much our friend anymore. And so that's kind of a new scoring and screening criteria that we are really emphasizing within the update. And then being able to maintain plant operations through those updates as well is another key. So there has, there was some discussion with the, I believe it was last council meeting, the, the construction manager at risk proposal that we're, we're discussing getting out there. A lot of that has to do with us looking at these alternatives and, and as we look to design them into reality, ensuring that we're, you know, again, speed of delivery, maintenance of plant operations, being most efficient with selections around those, those alternatives was all a piece of that, that CMAR component. So we're, like I said, we're, we're just kind of rolling up our sleeves into the alternative side of things here and on the fast track to get this done as, as the project proceeds and as we, we learn more about the definitive, definitiveness of schedule. Not a ton to say on changes in, in raw water supply alternatives. I believe the update has been provided to council to this point, that we did submit that to Department of Water Resources, formerly State Water Commission, and have been approved at this point for all the preliminary, preliminary components of that class, the cost, which essentially is getting us up through to the design and bidding point of the project. None of that has started, but we are still proceeding down the path of, of this as the, the primary option for water supply. I alluded to the stormwater master plan. That was updated. This was another big piece in the background of evaluating the, the Fu Fang plant footprint relative to the annexation areas and in consideration of where the cutoffs are for drainage to the English Cooley versus the English Cooley diversion. Essentially what we're showing here, and you can see in the graphic is, and I believe this has been shared as well, the, the proposed footprint of the pond that's going to be required to serve both the plant and the, the surrounding existing and future development areas. One of the big things that we did look at here is, in order to drive down those costs, was looking at all the storm sewer sizing, routings, lengths, being able to pull those units. So we've made a lot of progress on this. I'd say we're essentially done, except for finalizing the report because there was acceleration required on this piece in order for us to get a lot of the answers, again, on, on the assessment analysis. That, I'll hand over to Mr. Phelan to talk gas supply and a few other items here.
Thank you, Sean. One of the big items is, Mayor and I had a conversation with Senator Kuhn, and he was telling us, hey, this natural gas pipeline coming into Grand Forks County is going to be a big deal, and, and we should really sell that for agribusiness development. And we said, yes, yes, we, we have been trying to do that. So I think this is a really important piece to our development here on the east side, is the state of North Dakota wants to drive development on the west side, but it also wants to deliver it to the east side of North Dakota. And we want to be one of those communities that wants to grow and develop our natural born resources here that we have. So this is the layout, and we, and I talked to you a little bit about this before, is there's this discussion about the 10-inch line versus the 12-inch. And so this is, again, the North Dakota Industrial Commission is going through a process to deliver natural gas to Grand Forks County. They have a $10 million investment to subsidize that to, to come. There's $140 million that is going to be invested to bring blocking gas from the west to the east. I suspect another project that's going to really be important to us, other than the Frederick Valley Water Supply Project, will be that getting additional funding for that natural gas to get further to the east. And, and we're going to have so much gas that's going to come out to eastern North Dakota and serve every place from, from west to east. It's going to be, have to be exported throughout our country too. So it's going to be a big boon for, for Grand Forks and beyond. So really this discussion in Viking is, Viking in one oak is probably, is, hasn't been selected, but they're the ones that are most naturally inclined to be able to serve us from Grand Forks County because they, they are in and around us. And so the, the conversation right now, they're putting together proposals. The proposals they're putting together to the state of North Dakota is that we should deliver a 12-inch line to Grand Forks County in and around. deliver a twelve-inch line to Grand Forks County in and around the city of Grand Forks to deliver. You can see where the ten-inch line is all that Fu Fang needs to deliver on their project. I think there's the, with a twelve-inch line, the state wants, does not want to invest any more than $10 million for this. Fu Fang already feels like they've invested significant sums to bring the twelve-inch line or the ten-inch line here. I think it's in the city's court. Do we want to pay for that $500,000? That will upsize the line and, and provide us, you know, instead of $42,000 decotherms, it's going to provide $56,000 decotherms. It will provide us surplus capacity in our community in advance of a Bakken natural gas line coming to our community. And so one of the discussion items, working with One Oak, and I've had some conversations, is likely in kind of this April-May timeframe, they're going to ask likely the city of Grand Forks, our, and probably on behalf of our growth fund, Mr. Weber, do we want to pay that incremental difference of the $500,000 to pay for additional capacity that would be, could be delivered to Grand Forks County? They can't say specifically it's going to be delivered to a city of Grand Forks project, but it's going to be delivered in our region. As we know right now, if we're going to have a large agri-business project, it's likely to go in and around Grand Forks because we have infrastructure to serve them from water, wastewater and all the, all the things we're talking about right now. You can't have loads of natural gas without having to work with a community like Grand Forks to deliver. So that's one of the conversation piece that we plan to bring to you here in that April timeframe. Senator Kuhn even said he, he talked to the director of, of minerals, Mr. Helms, who's, you know, is kind of a, a man who's done a lot of great things for the state of North Dakota. He's even willing to come to a city council meeting, and I'm going to follow up with him, to talk about really the opportunity we have in front of us. Not only this, the, this initial route to Grand Forks County, but what can happen with that larger line. And I think he really wants to bring the east part of the state back together with the west and really us working together for the greater good of our economy in, in North Dakota. So we're going to, we're going to try to bring him to a city council meeting and introduce him and, and really talk to you as really this northern region of North Dakota and really trying to drive economic development in our communities. So more to come on that.
Todd, a couple of questions on that. I mean, the other advantage we have is we have redundancy we don't have now, right? I mean, obviously we would serve Fu Fang, but you would have redundancy because whatever many years ago when the current, I don't know who supplies natural gas right now, but, but where we did have problems in the past, we just about lost all heating capacity for the city of Grand Forks. So I just find it almost for me and old mayor, investing $500,000 for redundancy and future growth is a great investment.
Council member Vian, you're right. And I think even later when that Bakken line comes to the east, I mean, we're talking right now, we're talking 56,000 decotherms. When that new pipeline from the Bakken to east, I mean, that's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of decotherms that are going to be delivered along the way. They're going to hook up communities like Rugby that they do not have natural gas. And so they're, and Devil's Lake needs some additional natural gas. So they're going to pick up some communities along the way. We're going to have some industries along the way. Just as an example, like Northern Plains Nitrogen, they need 80,000 decotherms is what they're, so you can, you can see when you're doing hundreds of thousands of decotherms how much natural gas is going to come through a pipeline to, to North Dakota. And I agree, it's going to provide redundancy not only for communities like Grand Forks, but also for industries. It's going to, it perhaps will lower costs because we'll have more options. And when Mr. Vian talked about that natural gas, there was a, there was a, I'm going to call it a booster station or pump station on the Trans-Canada pipeline in Canada that, you know, had issues. And in the middle of winter, we, we, we came pretty close to having some real challenges here in our community. So redundancy is important and thankfully the gods were on our side that night and everything worked out.
If I may, Mr. Phelan, $500,000 incremental investment. By incremental, you just mean we're increasing the, this, this is to increase the size of the pipe. It doesn't mean 500,000 this year and future. It's a one-time deal.
It would be one-time. It'd be one-time to move the, instead of the $10 million investment, it needs to be a $10.5 million investment to get you from the ten-inch line to the twelve-inch. And again, that, you know, additional 14,000 decotherms that will be delivered to our, in and around our, our community here.
And if I could try to provide some context, we, we heard earlier, over 20,000 vehicles on Highway Two, we're going to increase that by a couple hundred a day. 500,000, sounds like a lot of money. We just approved one and a half million dollars, three times that amount for three blocks of road. So these, these are big numbers, but putting them in context, this is fantastic for, to get that extra gas capacity coming to our community. You mentioned growth fund, which normally just handles revolving loans, but how, how would this be a growth fund? It would be a JDA or a growth fund? What would that look like? Maybe it's too early to talk about that.
Council member Weber, I think you could do either fund either 2163, which is yours, economic development or the growth fund. And certainly we would get some sort of return on that, you know, in, in developing businesses up. And I think Mr. Lund is here. We're arming our economic development folks to drive additional agri-business in our community, where they're, whether they're, you know, we know in and around us soybean crushing plants, which is one value-added ag processing that we don't have in our community. More and more facilities are going to look to, you know, Grand Forks as that hub.
Thanks.
One area that we've worked real hard in, and I'm really, one of the things that before it comes to, to planning is only everyone wanting to know the tax impacts and the special assessment impact. So we, we've spent a lot of time, we have spoken with most of the property owners in the adjacent area to this growth area of, of the Fu Fang agri-business park as we do. So we have sent this out to you in advance. We've been, we're making some edits as people take a review of it and we've made a few edits. So really those, all those assessments, we've, we've numbered the parcels. We've looked at water, sanitary sewer, storm, storm pond, paving and flood protection. And, and then looked at the proposed mitigation. And so when we've met with property owners, we've said all these are going to require city council approval. Number one, right now as, if we could go back in time, one of the things the city could do is probably do what Fargo did, is pass a sales tax to pay for all the local cost share of the flood protection project. The city of Grand Forks didn't do that. And because we didn't do that, we have specials. And as you get annexed into the city, you get future specials. And that's one of, probably one of the bigger deterrents to growth in our community. And so as you get brought in. And so as, as, when you talk about, why don't we just annex the whole section? Well, because there's a lot of specials and primarily those are flood specials. So we've talked about this flood special. Obviously, what would our community be without flood protection? Well, we'd have a lot of insecure spring days that we don't have to deal with right now. And so a lot of the discussion on the flood specials with, with the groups is while I don't really, I didn't need flood protection in 97 and I haven't needed it since, probably a lot of, a lot of residential, commercial, industrial entities in Grand Forks could say the same thing, is, you know, the city was inundated about 70% of the city. But when the city council put that together, it was good of all because without the whole community working together as part of flood protection, where would we be? But it is one of the detractors and, and as you look through that spreadsheet, the annexation and the specials, the flood one is one of the larger ones. What we did in this case generally, and this would be a city council approval, is the specials have to be paid off when you get annexed in, in its future 20 years. So we've extended those to 30 years in this case as part of helping out people on the, on the yearly payment. The other thing that we looked at is this water supply. So Mr. Gaddy talked about going to the North Dakota Department of Water Resources and to the State Water Commission for the raw water. We also did go to the State Water Commission, the North Dakota Department of Water Resources on the water supply. So that's the, the drinking water lines and the fire flow to get that same 60% cost share that we got on the raw water. So we've got preliminary approval from the State Water Commission to do that. So all those lines that are going to deliver eight-inch and 16-inch lines that are going to derive not only drinking water but fire flow to that area, we've asked the state to pay 60%. They preliminary have approved that. And the 40%, what we're proposing is that we would take out a drinking water SRF loan for up to 30 years and that, and that we would pay that back through rates. Everyone would pay that back through rates. Okay, so that's our strategy is to do that. That's the first time we've asked for state funding of 60% on, on water lines. Reason why we're doing that, we're going into a new area to, that's an infill area, that's going to also serve Fu Fang, and there's lots of reasons why we want to get it set up right. And that's in the state interest to help cost share in that vein. Number two is the sanitary sewer collection. So Mr. Gaddy went through the city of Grand Forks and any development, we pay for the wastewater lift station, we pay for the forest main, and generally the collection system is special assessed. In this case, the state of North Dakota received clean water SRF loans. And so as part of the infrastructure bill, 49% of those loans could be forgivable. And so what we're going to ask the state, as when you look at the spreadsheet, we're going to ask for the, the infill adjacent area to be part of loan forgiveness because they are in an infill area. We're trying to make them, this assessment as affordable as possible. I would suspect what we've heard and what we've seen is that some of the septic systems are, some are probably just fine, but some of them are probably near and needing replacement. So I think it's in the counties wants to try to do away with septic systems as much as possible. The state in North Dakota has an interest environmentally to do it. So that's the reason why we'd say cost and environmental impact, if we can get them in a closed wastewater system, it's better for the environment and better for all of it. And then you would have a long-term asset. Obviously, when you put in a sanitary sewer collection system, it's going to last 50-plus years. And so even if your system's not needing to be repaired next week or in five years, what we're proposing is that none of the sanitary sewer system improvements are going to be assessed to any of the adjacent property owners. And then you can hook up when you want to hook up. Finally, we looked at city trunk cost share policies. Like on 27th Avenue North, we have an 80% cost share, not only on the street, but also the storm sewer in that area. We've also are not going to assess the storm pond, any of the adjacent property owners, and that will be a city and a Fu Fang cost share. So as you look through that spreadsheet, what, and there's a, there's a line that shows what's, on, on the left side of the dark, of the bold line is what the city and the state primarily are going to pick up. To the right is what is going to be special assessed. And primarily now, after we go through all these policies, you, you have to look at the stormwater trunk system. Some of that is being assessed to some of the property owners. 20% to some of the property owners, the 20% of the storm and also the paving of that project. The flood protection project is going to be assessed to those property owners. Those are the primary areas where people on the right side of that bold line are being I would say what we've looked at is the first two projects, I think we're fortunate to have a state in North Dakota and that we're going to make a strong case. Those are two extraordinary things that generally are always special assessed, but we have two state programs in the, in the drinking water side and the clean water side that we're, we're going to try to get done as part of that. All, all the items on the, beyond the flood protection, we're going to do 30 years. So bonding, so we can get some, we can get state revolving loans. So those will be 30-year terms on those two. And, and hopefully at a, at a low interest rate that the state provides often at 2%. Again, we've met with a lot of the property owners, feedback we received, some are encouraged about the cities wanting to develop, that we need to, we need to kickstart the community. This is really good for the community and it really fits the niche in this area. The land that where Fu Fang is going to go is set up as future industrial property. It's been sold as future industrial. And so it's really the prime time to do that. And even some of the property owners in, adjacent to 81 says, you know, we, we've avoided annexation for a while and we figured at some point it's going to come. Not a lot of them are going to speak publicly about that at this, at this podium because it's not in their best interest too. So just so you know that. On the negative side, there's a lot of concerns about the Chinese connection and we, we did hear a lot of that. So we've heard that a lot in this, in these meetings and we heard a lot about it again. Environmental concerns and all the things that Mr. Gaddy went through, we've heard. And so we want to make sure that we do as much due diligence on all those items as possible. Again, like any other city resident, nobody wants to pay special assessments, even if it's, you know, a lot of the street projects we talked about, reconstruction that Al talked about, it's 20% cost share. Even at 20%, I'm glad we have a sales tax, so we went from 50% special assessments to 20%. But even at that, people don't like paying special assessments. People are concerned about taxations and, and Mr. Hodak's going to come up and talk about that. The other thing is about the increased evaluations and Mr. Hodak's going to talk about that. Falconer Township provides, does the assessments, county accepts those. The, most of the properties are undervalued in this area. And you know, that's been an issue with the state of North Dakota, trying to make sure there's tax and value equalization throughout, off the state of North Dakota. And so we do have some issues. The properties are probably most closely valued to what they are, are due to recent sales. You know, if, if somebody bought something last week, that value's put on the property. But if, if there hasn't been a recent sale, the values have lagged. And Mr. Hodak will, will go over that. The other thing we heard about is workforce availability. Where are we going to get all these workforce? And the, the second part of that is concern about what if I have some really great employees and Fu Fang comes in here, they might take some of my best employees. So it's not only a workforce availability, but it's also, A, it's a competitive environment. I've trained up my folks. What happens if somebody can come in and provide better pay and better benefits and it's going to hurt my business? So we, we heard in both veins of workforce development. I'm going to ask Mr. Hodak to go over some of the property taxation and evaluations.
Thank you, Todd, and members of the committee. When we started this process, the mayor asked the assessing department to go in and, and value these properties as if they were part of the city. So that's what we tried to do as best we could. The first thing we did is we started with looking at the land. A lot of the land information is available online, square footage and, and things like that. So we were able to do a pretty good job with the land. What I did is I took all the, the values of the existing property that we have within city limits in North Washington. I used the same land rates moving all the way through this development. And that's going to create equity. And that equity is, is as big a concern for me as anything, I couldn't think of any, a better way to do it. So in terms of land value, it's going to be just like the properties that are in the city. It's going to, the land value is going to be supported by vacant land sales, both in Falconer Township and in the city of Grand Forks. The difference between my land value and the county's land value is largely going to be my land values, assuming that it's in the city of Grand Forks. It has city utilities. It's commercial property, not ag. I think in the end, there might be a couple of these lots that would still be able to keep their ag land designation, but I think largely most of these vacant lots are going to be commercial. But that's, that was my assumption going in, is that they would be mostly commercial. As far as the buildings go, we, we measured the buildings using the GIS and any other information we could find online or the county had some information, mostly, most of our information came from the GIS. So we measured the buildings and the paving off of that. And then I estimated what kind of occupancy the building was. Is it a shop? Is it a warehouse? Is it an office space? And from there, I, I, I estimated market rents for these, what do I think these buildings would rent for? So after reviewing the sales that have occurred in Falconer Township, both vacant land and improved sales, after looking at what I think these buildings would rent for and listing them in our model, just like we would any other property in Grand Forks, we were able to come up with a cost approach and an income approach. Those two values, one will support the other, just like our model does. And then those values will generally be bracketed by sales of similar properties. Shop sales will, will bracket the value conclusions that we came up with. So that, that's basically the, the process we use. I treated them just like I would any other property in Grand Forks. We use the same model. I actually entered these into our computer system. I can print out statements and summaries for property owners. As a matter of fact, I've got a couple of meetings set up to go through more specifics with a couple of property owners. If my assumptions are inaccurate, and I had to make a lot of assumptions to If my assumptions are inaccurate, and I had to make a lot of assumptions to do this, if my assumptions are inaccurate, it may lead to an inaccurate value. But a lot of these buildings have been around a long time. I'm reasonably comfortable with what we did. It's, it's an estimate. That's all it is. I think the bulk of the increase came in the, in the land value. That's to be expected. The land value is where the utility costs and the utility values are going to be showing up. That's part of the land value. That's an improvement to the land. So it makes sense that the land values was where you're going to see the biggest increase. As far as the general results go, I think I found what I think is a lot of inequity in, in the existing values. Some of my values came very close to what the township had, which means they're valued based on current market. Others were very, very low. I would caution that with some of the land differences, like I say, the biggest difference there is going to be a reclassification going from ag land to commercial land. That, that's going to make a big difference in the value. So percentage-wise, if you see big numbers, that's probably why the land value went up so much. Our overall increase in value on all of these approximately sixty parcels was about eight point four million. Six million of that is, no thanks, six million of that is land. So a big, a big chunk of the increase is, is coming from the land. And I think that's in large part the reclassification from ag to commercial and the addition of the utilities and city services. That eight point four million results in about a two hundred thousand dollar increase in value. Again, that's going to vary widely from one parcel to the next, but that's overall what, what I'm seeing. I, I think that, that about sums it up. I don't want to talk too much about individual parcels. But if anybody's got any questions on the overall process or the results, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Paul. The one thing that Mr. Hodak brought up in, in discussions as we kind of looked through the multiple sources of funding, and we've talked a lot about these already, from the escrow funds to permit and connection fees that Fu Fang's going to pay, special assessments, some of the designated ARPA funds from the city and the county to help offset some of the wastewater treatment plant costs. We've talked about the state water commission cost share. We've talked about our trunk benefits for the city. We've talked about revolving loan funds, whether they're drinking water or clean water SRF. The other thing that, again, due to high oil prices right now, this could be the first biennium where we, we receive all the funding for the so-called Prairie Dock Funds, which is pretty extraordinary. Even the fact that we've moved back in line on Prairie Dock, we think by the end of the year or early next, before the end of the biennium, that we should get our, our twelve million dollars, you know, plus Prairie Dock Funds this biennium. We haven't designated, we've only designated a small percentage of those twelve million. I recall maybe two and a half million at the most. And so we should, we should have incremental money that we can designate to infrastructure projects. And this would be another area where we could do that. And the state legislation for Prairie Dock pressed upon that with water, wastewater, stormwater, street-type infrastructure. So it's really the things that we're doing here. We may have some other additional opportunities to help offset assessments, to offset different cost shares that impact rates too. So that, that's, that's a positive that as part of the twenty-three budget process, we could inject that conversation into some of the things that we're doing here currently. We do also have some utility cash on hand and other funds. And as you recall, Mr. Vian, I don't know, in the mid-two thousand fifteen or so, he, he really pushed on the strategic infrastructure growth areas, that we should use our economic development funds to fund trunk infrastructure. So not only having greenfield-ready developments, but let's put some infrastructure in there, whether that's water, wastewater, streets. And so that's another portion where we could use some of our economic development funds to help offset some, some of the investments too. Again, the city's sales tax has been much more than we anticipated. And a lot of those sales tax funds roll into our, some of our economic development opportunities. So there's one more opportunity as part of the twenty-three budget that we could consider. The other thing, going back to what I was reasoning, you know, Mr. Hodak, no, you followed up with Mr. Goss had to say, you know what, people are going to see increases on specials, even after all the things that we've done to mitigate. And I think we've done a pretty darn good job. And I don't think you're going to find any other development where we've mitigated special assessments like we've done, we've done in this area, whether it's through leveraging the Fu Fang project or leveraging state and federal programs. I think we've done a really good job to try to mitigate that. That all being said, they're coming into the city of Grand Forks. You're going to pay city and you're going to take park district taxes. You're, you're going to get rid of Faulkner Tax. You're, you're going to, that's going to be a higher percentage increase for that. Also, the values are going to go up in these properties. That's going to cause property taxes to increase too. So the one thing we thought of, and this would again require city council approval, and something that we haven't done, you know, is to create either a TIF district where you could take those increments of that value, you know, Mr. Hodak talks about a value. Say some property was valued at a hundred thousand and now it's going to be valued at four hundred thousand. You could take that increment. We could take that increment on the, on the tax side and maybe dedicate it that to some of the special assessments here. So we've never created a TIF district. And so this would be a tax increment financing district where I think if we're going to do one, this one fits well, where you could dedicate some of your incurious value, you're in that increment of taxes you're going to pay, dedicated to the infrastructure investment that you're going to have to pay. Now, as you recall, we've done a lot of mixed-use incentive projects. Many of the most recent ones have been more than five years. And so the city council has an ability to approve up to five years. Anything beyond five years, again, we've got to get Grand Forks County and the Grand Forks School District to approve. But that'd be one more thing in our arsenal, I think, that we could do. And whether it's a formal TIF district or maybe we create a quasi-TIF district that kind of functions like a TIF district, but we find a different way to do it, that would be one more tool. As Kirk Kuhn was here back in the city council days, he always loved the tool in the toolbox. That would be one more tool we could bring that would help offset. And I think it would be a sensible, I don't like increased taxes, but at least it's going toward some sort of investment in my property. Some of the property owners may say, I really don't care, that, that they don't like that argument. But it'd be one more thing you could do as a city council if you're interested. I'm only bringing that up today because you have to approve it. If, if that has any legs, you know, we're certainly willing to, to work on that. And I'm really thankful for Mr. Hodak to pulling that out of his back pocket. And, you know, the mayor talked to me, he says, you know what, maybe we ought to place that on the table this evening too, to, to see what kind of interest that gets also. The other thing, I'll just go on the national security outreach update. So Mayor Bochensky and I have taken that to heart. And so I just want to give you an update on, on kind of where we're at. Obviously, mayor keeps in close contact, and we all do, with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. We were just in Washington DC. We were at the Pentagon. The future of the Grand Forks Air Force Base, as the mayor said last week during his announcements, is very bright and is poised for a lot of base of the future kinds of things. And so we're not going to do anything that would harm the Grand Forks Air Force Base. I'm just going to provide you an update is that the mayor has informed the wing commander. He has moved that up to his chain of command. And if we're going to hear something, we're going to hear about it directly to the city of Grand Forks. We have not heard anything to date on, on that issue regarding concerns with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. The other thought we had is Senator Kramer suggested to Mayor Bochensky that to reach out to a think tank or a consultant that he had high respect for, so that we did do that. And the preliminary results are there's, it's not considered a national security risk and there's no red flags at this point in time. And again, the Fu Fang USA is not on a White House National Security Prohibition list to do, to do business with at this point in time. The other list that we talked about with the consultant is this National Counterintelligence Security Center. And obviously, we are in a race with China for our economic welfare in the future. There's no doubt about that. And so we can either, and I think as part of the strategy, either we wring our hands about it or we start trying to do something with that. So the federal government has picked five different areas of concern that we need to be competitive in, and those are artificial intelligence, biotechnology, autonomous systems, quantum computing and semiconductor. So those are those five distinct areas that are really, are going to be the race for the future. And it's going to be between the United States of America and, and China. And so the longer-term discussion is this agro-business and wet corn mill does not fit within that. We've talked about, you know, the wet corn milling has been around for decades, if not a hundred years. And so it's not a new age. There might be a different way where Fu Fang is going to develop the market for amino acids. Maybe they got some sort of intricacies of how they're going to perfect amino acids, but these are not leading-edge technology that's going to change the world. And if we don't catch the wave, we're going to be in big trouble as, as a country. Final thing we did, we did reach out to the FBI area office and they are certainly willing to provide unclassified briefings to city leaders. And just what we ought to be aware of, having some situational awareness, and they're certainly willing to do that. We did talk to the office and they're going to take that back and provide us feedback in that vein. With that, I'd hand it over to Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Todd. Vice President, members of committee, I'm going to go through a few of the next steps for the land use, the zoning requirements, plating and annexation. So first of all, I want to kind of give an update of where our current land use plan is. We're currently operating under the twenty forty-five Future Land Use Plan. That was adopted at the end of twenty sixteen. The area, as you can see, the area here is where the proposed site is. This is industrial. As you can see, the, the legend here, industrial is gray. There was one small portion that was ag. We actually pushed over here to the interstate, but our new land use plan we're working on has this entire area and additional ones as industrial. In the last five and six years, we've done very well in the industrial side and we've had to expand that sector. So I also want to give you some background of currently what's existing on this site or north of the site. I'll, I'll start up there. Just on the north side is Mindax Seeds, which is an ag processing up on the north side. So the north side of the Fu Fang site is Fortieth Avenue. That's our flood diversion channel is up on the north side. So just on the north side is Mindax Seeds. We have some trucking, warehousing type pieces just to the north of that. CF Industries is up here. And then there's an old gavel and grain PV elevator that's up here right at, as you get up to where US eighty-one comes together with the interstate. So that, that's kind of the lay of the land on the north side. To the south of the site, we have Simplot, of course. And just to kind of give everybody some scale, the south end of the site, Twenty-seventh Avenue North, that's one mile north of Gateway Drive. So a lot of people, as we've gone out and talked with some of the businesses that were even around this area, they didn't understand where exactly we were talking about. So if you think about Gateway Drive, most people know where that is, no matter where they're in town. One mile north of that is the south end of the site. Simplot's to the north of Gateway Drive. We have other industries north of there as well. And so as you take a look at where we're at with some of those, this is that whole area. We already had that as industrial for the future as well. In terms of distance from some of our existing residential, Riverside Park, for example, is over a mile away. And you have the state mill that's kind of in between that area and the areas that we have along Old Mill Road and, and North Washington would be in between those areas, existing many businesses operational. To the south, Simplot, like I said, to the Lake Agassy neighborhood, I'll, I'll call that generically, Lake Agassy neighborhood, you're over a mile as well to where those areas are. And again, you have Simplot area in between that with some of those buildings as well. So the planning and zoning highlighting April sixth, it's a week from this Wednesday. That'll be preliminary approval is going to be on that agenda for the rezoning, the plating of the property. We're going to take all those parcels and they're dividing those up. One large site for the plant and then one for the, where the stormwater pond will be as well. Annexation will also be on that list, and I think we covered that in detail before this. I'll go through the zoning that we have on the site. So for this map here, green is obviously agricultural. So it's not unusual, we don't automatically rezone everything in our land use plan automatically to what the future land use is. There's implications to that, obviously. But in this case, still, this is shown as agricultural. So the, what's going to be started next Wednesday is the rezoning of this property to allow for the industrial site to go there. Green, like I said, is agricultural. What you're seeing here, purple, is, is an existing industrial sites. So we have the existing businesses along the left side of North Washington. Here's that Mindax site here, warehousing up here, and then CF Industries and the PV elevators even north of that. Simplot's just off to the, the bottom of the page here. Gateway Drive is, is there as well. So you can start to see how we came up with this. So you can see there's industrial to the north, industrial to the south. That's why we're really seeing this as something that we had always envisioned as being industrial in nature on this site. So I'll also highlight some of the yellow that you're seeing and the distances away. Here's your Riverside neighborhood that's over here. So, and then everything that's existing in between there. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have. It's a quick kind of run-through and a little bit of a preview of what's to come, future meetings.
I guess one question I do have is with petition signatures delivered, do we know where we are with evaluating those petition signatures? And how does that play into moving forward with any of these items?
Yep. And maybe this might be a great segue. I can, I think this is my spot to, to discuss those items. I just want to, there was a delivered documents, hold on everyone a second, documents that were delivered to the city's auditor's office on March twenty-third of twenty twenty-two, containing a number of what I call petition packages. Just so you know, I was not asked to review that petition before, or those documents before they came in. I know that in the Arbor Park petition, that was done by the city attorney's office prior to it being shepherded around. Just see, just to give you some background, in order to have a valid petition, and it's for ordinances, resolutions, is the way our city, our Comerel Charter speaks of, it has to be signed by qualified voters of the city of Grand Forks that equal at least fifteen percent of the total votes for the last governor election, which would have been twenty twenty. And don't quote me on the number, but I think it's, it's about thirty-five hundred, thirty-six hundred.
The number is three thousand six seventeen.
The petition also, there's requirement that the full text of what's being referred is either contained within that petition document or attached to it. Each petition document also has to have the names of the three electors that are the committee for the petitioners who represent an act for the petitioners. And each petition document also has to have an affidavit by the circulator affirming that they believe they're qualified electors for the city of Grand Forks. Those are kind of the primary is what needs to be contained within, within those documents. Under our Comerel Charter, the city auditor has a period of twenty days to certify the sufficiency of what's been presented. of what's been presented. And based upon the date when they came in, it appears that April 12 of 2022 is the 20 day, the date the 20 day period would expire. Interestingly, that if there is no response, if it's not certified to be either insufficient, then it's deemed to be sufficient. So they, if we don't do anything, if there's no response, it's deemed sufficient effectively. However, if it is, if there is a determination made that it is deemed insufficient, the city auditor is to notify the committee to specify the insufficiencies. And they have then seven days to correct or amend those insufficiencies that can be corrected or amended. One of the items in our Home World Charter, however, states that you can go out and get additional signatures, but only for those, only when you're initiating an ordinance. It says nothing about getting additional signatures when you're referring a matter. With the filing of a petition.
But that would be up to us. We could grant that?
There is no role for the city council in this in this process. With the filing of the petition or petitions with the auditor, what it does is it it suspends the ordinance or resolution that's being referred. There are certain exceptions. And that suspension would terminate if there is an insufficiency and those items are not corrected or amended. If the petition is withdrawn, the election, or if the council would happen to repeal, the ordinance would would require a reconsideration process. If it's found to be sufficient, then you are to then you're required to put the matter at in an election, and the election is to be held not later than the next regular general election date. The what we, as you know, we entered into a joint powers agreement with the county to handle elections, and it does include their ability to handle special elections if we need to. But they handle our general elections for us. And what I've been told is they need the ballot information by April 11 of 2022 in order to have that on the June general election. So that may cause some issues with if if it's found to be sufficient, we may need to think about how we conduct that election. You could conduct a special election on your own as well would be one of the, but I haven't gotten to that point yet. The ballot, if we if it's deemed sufficient, and there's an election, the ballot has to fairly summarize the ordinance or resolution being referred to, and their copies of the ordinance has to be made available in the city auditor's office at least 10 days before the election. If there is this election, if a majority votes no, that means it's deemed repealed, whatever has been referred. At this point, I know the city, the city auditor is to pass upon the sufficiency of what's been presented. And that is what is being done now, is they're reviewing with the assistance of my office, reviewing the petition. We are also reviewing it as well. And we would intend to make recommendations to the city auditor with respect to what's been submitted as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You use the, you said we several times, but you also said that the council has no role in that. Can you help me understand the division between what we means and what what role the city does, the council does or does not have?
This is a determination by the Home World Charter. It's a determination as to the sufficiency of what has been submitted is the city auditor's decision, and the city auditor's decision only under their Home World Charter. City Council plays no role in in passing upon whether the city auditor made the right decision or not. There is no oversight and no review by the city council under the Home World Charter. So if I use the term we, it wasn't intended to include the city council. Your role would be only to shepherd it through with respect to an election if it's deemed what has been submitted to be sufficient.
Do we have any sense at this point if the petitions that have been submitted meet meet the requirements that you described?
No.
We don't know that yet.
We do not. We're reviewing that.
Council Vice President, that's the extent of our presentation this evening.
If I may, I have some follow up questions for Mr. Phelan quickly. Incredibly creative approach to financing the infrastructure, including the stiff idea to offset the specials connected to annexation. Any concern about setting a precedent here? I mean, we're able to take opportunity of a unique time. There's oil prices are high, COVID, the federal government gave us lots of money. So it's an unusual setting. But but there's also a risk that this is setting a precedent? What do you think?
Yeah, Councilmember Weber, we're always concerned about precedent, but not to paralyze us from doing something. I think this is a unique circumstance. We've said the Fu Fang development and investment is extraordinary. We have adjacent properties that have been just outside the city that haven't been annexed, that are potentially being drawn in. And so I think it's a real unique circumstance. You know, there are some parallels with other developments, but I think in this case, it's it's unique unto itself. You know, there's lots of similarities in life, but this is unique. And I think it's unique in the fact that we have one time opportunities to take advantage of some state and and some state funding that's come via the federal government. And and it's also trying to hear out what people want and trying to do as much as we can to alleviate some of the issues that we have heard. And so it is a good faith effort as we move forward. And again, it would be city council approval. But we could bring it in front of you to see if it passes the muster. I think it's a really great opportunity to invest in a lot of great infrastructure that's going to last 50 to 100 years in this area. And it's really going to add a value, really with or without Fu Fang in that area.
Very good. Thanks. This is information only, so we're not looking for a motion. I have a quick comment and then a final a final question. Overall, the largest investment ever in our city's history, $700 million investment, it's a complex undertaking. And one of the critiques has been that we're, why are we moving forward without knowing all of the answers? It simply isn't possible for us to know all of the answers until we start dipping our toe in and with the development agreement and and these ongoing studies. So I think that that was well demonstrated tonight. My question is, when would we be voting on any of the multiple steps that we've heard about tonight?
Councilmember Weber, I think in our timeline, we had, I think we had three to six month. I think a lot of these decisions are going to come probably in the last quarter of this year. I'm going to say the fall of this year, that we're going to be set on some of these matters. I think the air permitting is going to take longer than that. But I think some of the stuff that we're working on that Mr. Gaddy went over, we're going to have some decisions in front of you later this fall. And that would be the earliest that we would likely ask you to move forward with bids. I would do the one exception is probably that interim water line where we got to move it that goes, the rural water line that goes down the center. We're going to move that close to the property. We have, again, we've said this on behalf of the city council, is that we have told Agassy Rural Water that the city would pay to move that line and get everybody reconnected. They're going to go ahead and get submit bids in that in that regard, but that we would pay for it. And Mr. Gossett would come up with some sort of agreement to get that forward. That's probably the earliest, that's probably a May-June kind of thing, just to get that out of the way.
But even moving that water line has not committed us to the project. That's different steps that would probably make sense anyway that we'd be moving forward with. Real good. We will continue to, I can continue to anticipate updates of this sort, but actual votes probably not for many months yet.
Yes, I think the big votes in Mr. Brooks's here is that reason why we're really queuing it up now is that you do have that planning and zoning that's going to come through with vote. I mean, those aren't bids you're going to or authorization to go out and, you know, hire a C Mar or do, you know, accept bids on large things. But that planning and zoning is going to be in front of you in April and May timeframe. And so that we wanted to get this because we know that's going to be an approval process at the very least.
And even that annexation is not a commitment to the Fu Fang project. It is part of, it's consistent with our land use plan. It's just a step moving forward at this point. Yep. Thanks. Thanks.
Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Phelan.
See, you know, there's a lot of information that was presented today. I was wondering if there's one, a way that we could assemble that into like a document or file that would be on our website, like a prospectus of some sort that could be updated as time goes on and more information becomes available. But it's something for the public and the city council to have easy access to. And I just think it would be a great way to communicate. Is there a possibility of something like that?
Yeah, Councilmember Veen, yeah, we do have a web page with that. And so we'll continue to update this. And I think that's an important, important matter to kind of demonstrate objectively what we're working on. And, you know, as we know, sometimes we review things that probably aren't as accurate as they as they are in reality.
Okay, by all that, you do have it on a website right now that's that all of the information presented today will be on.
It will. Yep. And Mr. Bernstein's been running that site. So we'll make sure that we continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an estimate on when we're going to get the petition signatures reviewed with, I mean, with all this coming through planning and zoning, I think, you know, we've got a number of people who did a lot of work and are very vested in the, you know, in knowing the outcome of that. And I think we owe it to everyone to know as soon as possible.
We're going to, I would, we're going to use all 20 days, just because of the magnitude of the number of documents that came in, the magnitude of some of the, I want to give my my office an opportunity to review whatever issues exist. I want to also give the auditor's office as much time as possible. In fairness to their office, I know they've got other matters. In fact, I think they're going through an audit right now at the same time, and dedicate the number of staff that they need to review what has been submitted. We're going to need the full 20 days. With that said, the annexation is a matter that is going forward. It's the annexation is not dependent upon the development agreement being in existence. It's the development agreement, the conditions are dependent upon annexation occurring, but it's not the inverse. The annexation go forward whether the development agreement or whether Fu Fang even comes forward. And as I understand, the property owners want to go forward with that annexation.
So you are not looking for any action?
We're not, no.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you an update. And we'll give these periodic and to other groups that are interested too. So, you know, certainly Fu Fang has to get out there and provide some education on what they're trying to do too. So we're encouraging them to do it on being working with the Grand Forks Region EDC. We have the objective role to review all those things. But, you know, they certainly need to get out in the community to do their part too. And so, you know, we are proud that we are here. You know, when mayor, you know, we formerly the team, the mayor wanted us to try to be aggressive and get this. We weren't really on, it was known as Project Peony or Peony, however you want to know it. So we didn't know what it was, other than it was going to be a neighbor business. We didn't know the country of origin. And so we really worked hard. And of all things I'm proud of, I'm proud of the city team, department team really stepping up, going above and beyond, and hearing people out. And, you know, I've gotten to meet, we've all gotten to meet a lot of people like, you know, Mr. Spicer, and I've appreciated all his concerns. And and we may never agree on this whole project, but we have tried to listen to people and try to deliver some positive outcomes that deliver on most of their concerns. So that's what we've tried to do on your behalf, because that's, that's the bar we want to try to get over. And we'll continue to do that on your behalf.
Thank you. I guess typically, we don't take comments, but if comment cards were out there, I want to honor that. So Frank did fill one out. I'll admit, I'm kind of a stickler, so I'm going to set a timer, just to be fair. But.
Good evening. Frank Motec, 4150 Columbia Road North. I got real excited today. I saw Faulkner Township had appraisal comments. So I called all around the township, and I said, who made the comments? Nobody knew about it. I think it would be prudent and polite and a courtesy now that I found out that, I take it you wrote the comments, the city assessor?
Yes.
Right. And then the results. Okay. I guess it would be nice just to know who did that, because we assumed maybe it was our assessor, but she had not been contacted. We assumed maybe it was some of our officers and they hadn't been contacted. So I guess in the in the in the future, if you do that, because we have opinions in here, but we don't know whose opinion they are. We do now. We know they're yours. Okay. So I'll leave it at that. And I just want to ask Mr. Brooks a question. First of all, how many readings of the replat will there be at planning and zoning? Two?
Preliminary and final.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And the rezoning?
Preliminary and final.
Okay, the annexation?
Preliminary.
Just preliminary, and it's done?
At planning and zoning.
Right.
It's two on city council.
Okay, so it'll have a public hearing at the second planning and zoning?
For the rezoning, yes.
No, for the annexation.
The annexation only goes through.
The annexation only goes once. So on the April, the first Wednesday of April, that annexation could pass planning and zoning, and then it'll go to the city council the next Monday meeting.
Correct.
So in two meetings, that could be done.
Yeah, we'll track with the with the plating.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want everybody that's involved in this to know the process. Because the annexation only has the one reading, both places with public hearings. The rezoning and the plat has two.
Please.
Right?
So the annexation goes through Planning Commission just once, but it's through city council twice.
It is. Okay. I didn't know that. But I knew it was only once through planning and zoning.
That's correct.
Okay. So the first meeting, they'll have preliminary approval there, and then it'll be the second. So it'll be like four weeks?
Yeah, April 6 is preliminary for planning and zoning. April 18, I believe, is the third Monday. And then we'll be back first Monday, first Wednesday of May for final approval. And for final city council, the third Monday of May. I believe that's May 16 is the third Monday. So that's the tracking time.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure everybody has a calendar and knows what's going on here. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council?
Make your motion to adjourn.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.